Please join me in salute. For the leaders of the 2021 United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation. Okay. On Zoom, so you will be able to hear him but not see him. But I can see here. Okay. What was the timeline on this that you were anticipating getting these funds?
I'm sorry. Do you say?
Any questions?
Nope.
Rich, you got anything?
They're gonna have the assessment done first anyway, so it's too soon to make any decision other than to say good luck getting the grant, getting the assessment.
No, what he asked me to do is we've got capital improvement plan that can add that arm to the 2022 budget cycle here.
Correct.
So you need to make a motion to add it in, that's why you're kind of big projects, and then you're putting the capital improvement. Now, that budget number might change after you get the assessment done. If it goes from 25 to 50, you're right over 23 to 10.
In which case, we may not even endorse it if it goes from 25 to 50.
Okay.
I mean, that's still another option. And 25,000 is not an unreasonable amount, to be honest with you. And if the assessment comes in around that number, I think it's great. But if it gets a lot more expensive, then that may be something we need to discuss and open it up to the public to discuss and have input in, or have it as a warrant article.
Would that be done in this meeting or a CIP meeting?
CIP meeting.
That's what I thought.
Typically, everything goes into CIP and we vote to accept the CIP. Yeah, but the CIP has an element, but traditionally, we ask the board of selection. The board of selection, they want to be included in the process. The town head starts paperwork, gets passed by the board of selection. If you guys want to veto it, now's your time to veto it. You really don't want to see the CIP. If they didn't see us getting committed for feeling for our selection, we might influence them, we might not, still might end up on the CIP, just in the process.
Gotcha. Okay, so want your tan motion?
I'll make a motion to add the race daily bond to the capital improvement plan for estimated 2022.
Second.
For 25,000 dollars.
For 25,000.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Alasia?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Anything else for us, Ernie? Okay, next up, we have... Regarding the election.
Tammy has a list of things, and I kind of have a list of things, so I'll just start. For the pre-processing of the ballots, we're going to do that October 30th. And to streamline the process, I can appoint an assistant moderator who can be reading the names while we're pre-processing. And we wanted to double-check with the board. We're going to start at 11:30 in the afternoon. And we wanted to know, we checked with this individual, but we have to check with the selectmen, because there's a town employee who works downstairs, who's a town resident and registered to vote. And we were going to ask that she just come upstairs and be able to read the names. She's here, she's efficient, she knows how to read well, so, but we can't do that without the board of selectmen, because she's technically an employee who would normally be working. But we'd like to drag her up.
Her resources to that.
You know, so we wanted to ask you about that. And also, if necessary, we'll know a little bit more. The, um, we are allowed to let the town employee work for the election if they're registered voter and live in town. So if we need to, we just also wanted to know if the board of selectmen would let us utilize that individual, depending on what our final numbers are, what we might meet for the election. It's an efficient person who, you all know who you're talking about, I just didn't want to say the person's name out loud. And that would be a good addition to the staffing for the election, if you guys thought about that. So let us know. You don't have to tell me tonight if you guys want to think about it a little bit.
Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
What is our staffing level for the upcoming election? Are we?
Well, Tammy's still working on that. It was somebody we were counting on, who they're going to be going away, and they're not sure of their timing, so they've just said that they can't do it, so, we don't, I'm not sure we have the full numbers yet. Tammy has sent out an email to get that from people. Um, and the other thing that Tammy and I talked about, that we wanted to talk to you about, based on some things that happened at the town clerk's office, before or not on the day of the election, not the people wouldn't work, but if you could consider closing the town hall that day. There have been people who have tried dropping off ballots at the town clerk's office when nobody's there, which then means they're not counted, and the women in the office are trying to catch people as they walk down the hall and can't get everybody. Um, so we wanted to put that out, to see if you would consider that for the day.
I guess my question is, for someone to work the election, do they need to be a town resident if they're a town employee?
Town resident and registered voter.
And registered voter. So it can't just be any town, we could have any employee work outside, but that's not what we need. We need people who can check people off and are efficient and things of that nature. So it would have to be, there's only one person downstairs who qualifies for that.
But we could close the town hall to the public on election day, so that the workers could still do the, and get caught up and stuff.
Exactly, answer phones, the whole thing, but it caused an issue at the primary.
It did, it did. And we didn't know who dropped off that ballot, and that makes it a problem.
Nothing we can do about it after that. So it just, it would eliminate an issue with the election if the town offices weren't open enough, if people wouldn't be working, but that the building itself wasn't open that day. So we just wanted to put that out there to you. As I said, Tammy had a list of other things. Or the, if we could utilize that person as the assistant moderator that day, um, and possibly at the election if needed. Tammy knows those people's names more than I do. Um, and then closing the town hall, those are my issues. But Tammy has some other things to go over with you.
Hello. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for working at the primary and look forward to seeing you all at the general, and you give your gift cards so that you can buy, oh my god, no stabbing. Buy a coffee before you come into the election. Just for your information, as of right this minute, we have 837 absentee ballots that have been requested in mail, and we have 554 that have been requested mailed and have been returned, which is huge for us. I believe you have been given this bill to sign. Is my grant?
Yes. It should be in there, it should be in the town.
I applied for, on behalf of Kingston, a grant and was awarded $5,000. In addition to the grant that I applied for that's based on absentee ballots, so this is an additional 5,000. And I would like to talk to the select board about how you would like me to request payments and if I need to get approval first, or that the grant is for anything to do with the elections, whether it's paying people or purchasing equipment, anything basically that I need for the election, for election purposes.
How do we stand on PPE?
We are good. I, the only I have requested from the Secretary of State is two additional Sneeze Guards, those plastic, yep.
Should we be, do you have a list of what you want to purchase for that grant?
I do, yes.
As a matter of fact.
As a matter of fact, I would like to purchase two laptops, one for, to be used by supervisors of the checklist at the election, which is extremely helpful, and one to be used by the moderator and the town clerk at the election, so that we need to look up rules, if we need to calculate anything, we can have spreadsheets. We can also use it to look up voters, we can get onto the Secretary website, State's website, into ElectionNet and look up voters, if there are people registered or not, if they've submitted a ballot. Um, and then also, I could use that laptop afterwards to input stuff or to use for my fourth person when there's, when I need a little bit of extra help. I'd also like to purchase a hotspot, because the school has said that they are no longer going to provide that, so that we can actually hook up our computers at the election to the internet, to be able to reach the people and to get onto the ElectionNet system. Um, I would...
It's very helpful for the supervisors to be able to access the internet during the day.
Also, these little bins, I know it's silly, but just to, to put all my absentee ballots there, if you go down to my office, every single one that we've gotten back is in alphabetical order, along with the request for that ballot, and it just helps us organize everything. Um, those are some of the things I'd like to purchase, as well as pay some people. We are inundated. We had probably 50 people registered to vote today. Um, and then we still have to get 3,000 tax bills out in the next two weeks.
They're doing a yeoman's job down there. You can't imagine the volume of people that's being processed. And kudos also to the current supervisors of the checklist.
They are fat.
They have been going into the town offices with Tammy and updating the voter registration list, almost, someone's been in almost every day.
Every day, yep.
To make, to get those lists up to snuff, so that when we get to election day, we're going to be in better shape than most. And many thanks to them for stepping to the plate and doing what they need to do. Never mind you guys and your staff.
Never mind.
It's happening in there all the time, though. It's not, it's not like it's stupid.
What may be helpful if you tell the public about something, you know, use mail that's been mailed out?
Oh, yes. Use mail. So, um, excuse me. So, um, a mail was sent out by an unknown party to all kinds of residents in Kingston and other towns in the state of New Hampshire that looked like it came from me. There was a handwritten Post-it note on that mailer, and there was a self-addressed envelope that had my phone name and address on it, and there was an absentee ballot request form in that. So as soon as I wasn't made aware of that, I contacted the Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General's office, because A, it's illegal, because it didn't say who it came from, and B, I really had a big problem with it looking like it came from me. It made for a lot of confusion, especially in our older population. It made a lot of people question me, because why am I using post-town tax dollars for postage? Why am I getting this request when I've already voted? Why am I getting this request? So it added a lot of confusion. So unfortunately, there's nothing I can do about it, but I did report it, and the Secretary of State's office did put out something. I've seen a lot of people talk about it, but I'm still getting questions. I had two phone calls on it today, so I'm still getting, people still asking.
So what is the guidance from the Secretary of State on that?
Um, they basically have said they're looking into it, but there's nothing, nothing I can do about it. The only thing is, so we had people that filled out those applications and have sent them back to us, but they've already actually voted, they've already, they've already sent in there, they've already requested it and had their ballots returned. So now it just makes extra work for myself and my staff to double-check to say, oh, they've already got one, so we need to disregard this request, because they've already returned their ballots. But some people are using it, and they haven't...
But at the end of the day, it is coming to you.
It is coming to me.
It's not going to some random post office box somewhere.
Correct, correct. And that is a good point. And I've told people, like, if you don't want to use it, you can send your tax payment in with it, save yourself a statement.
There you go. I'm going to make lemonade.
Yep. So again, I'm just looking for some guidance on if I need approval for every item, or if, how you would like me to handle spending that grant, if we don't spend that $5,000, it has to be returned.
I guess the first question would be, is staffing leading up to the election? I know you have someone who's a trainee or intern, I don't know what we're calling her specifically, but helper. Um, is it possible to increase her hours to help with the additional load?
So she, right now, can only work a certain number of hours, because she also has another job, so, um, but I do have people, like, I had to have a ballot clerk come in today to do the testing of the ballot. We have to test 50 ballots 400 times on both machines. It's a very time-consuming process to test, we have to mark them and then hand-count them, and then test them, put them through that machine. 50 times each way on both machines.
On two chips for each machine, because you also have a backup chip.
Yeah, so she's been working on that. So there's only so much some of those people can do, but, um, they counted ballots. I actually also requested another thousand ballots from the Secretary of State's office, because we are having so many people registered, new registered voters, that I don't have enough ballots. So, but I will be able to use some of that money for up to and after the election, for person from, for staff to help.
Would we put a motion on for a purchase order? I mean, does that work? I'm not even sure myself.
Yeah, I mean, it's not very often we get a grant that doesn't really have any strings attached to it to just use it.
Beautiful thing.
Yeah, I mean, there's not really a protocol for that, so.
What can be used for, what?
Yeah, why don't we take that list and write up a purchase order for that?
Okay. That sounds like a great idea.
So the only thing is, the purchase order isn't going to be to one specific place, you know what I mean? I asked Cindy about it this morning, and she said, you don't really need a purchase order, it just, she would need something in the minutes that said that the selectman approved spending the $5,000, because the purchase order isn't going to be for staples for $5,000, it's going to be for, might be for 10 individual things.
Okay, so should we read into the minutes the items that you want to include in that $5,000?
Sure.
Is that the right way to do, make a motion to allow Mrs. Begy to spend?
I'm not going to buy, you know, new wardrobe or anything, I'm going to purchase.
New car?
Not for $5,000. You might be buying some tires, but...
I guess the main thing I would want to de-conflict is if we're already getting funds from the state for certain things, and whatever other sources that are being provided for the voting, we want to make sure, if that's already taken care of, we want to make sure we're targeting these at stuff that saves the town money, like salaries, things like that, for the voting. If it's stuff that saves the town money, I think that should be the primary focus, because...
Okay, so it can't surplant anything. Um, it, the, the money that we get for the other grant is based solely on our absentee ballots that we process, and that money will just, I assume, go into the general fund. We've already, I've already submitted a request for 3,000, over $3,000 for the last election. So then, that money, this money has to be spent before they'll reimburse us.
So we normally wouldn't be hiring a bunch of people to do certain things, so that wouldn't be surplanting.
Correct.
Because we didn't, we didn't expect to spend that amount of money.
Uh huh.
So I think salaries is a good one.
Salaries for the Friday when we process the absentee ballots would be a primary case of expedition duty above and beyond.
Yep.
That, that day, whichever town employees are working that day here to process absentee, would definitely qualify for that grant.
And that, and you're doing a lot more, testing the ballots with the machines downstairs, right?
No, that's the same.
If I can, I want to caution that it shouldn't just be used for that, because we're going to have more work for the supervisors at the election, they're short of computer. So that's why Tammy wanted to make sure one of them...
I haven't got there yet.
No, no, I just wanted to...
Yeah, but the Friday, the Friday's staffing is one thing, that would certainly eat up the remainder, but getting the two computers now out of this fund would be a big help to the town. And going forward, the precautions in place for balloting now is not going to change, it's not going to get less easy, or more easy, or whatever. It's going to be this intense going forward for a long time.
We have a town election five months away.
And dedicating one of those computers to supervisors is a definite plus, because that's going to expedite, um, the processing of registered voters. People, hopefully, they will continue to register the, the numbers that they earn and become more participatory in our election process, so...
So let me propose this. If someone wants to make a motion to apply for the funds and utilize them at the discretion of the town clerk, but we just request that there's a list that you provide to us of what you're planning on spending them on?
Okay.
And then that way we can...
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion?
If you're going to order computers, you want to work with discretion.
So I will tell you that we've already talked to the school, they cannot guarantee they'll have them.
They won't have them.
So I've gotten some prices, Adam's been very helpful, finding computers that will be adequate, um, through Staples. And if I can order them tomorrow, when he can do whatever he does, make sure they're...
I would say we want to use time researching that and everything like that, we want to make sure that falls into something we utilize those funds for, all that. But at your discretion, of course. Second, any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Alasia?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Thank you, Tammy, for getting that.
No, thank you. Appreciate it, and I look forward to seeing you all on November 3rd.
Well, before November 3rd, let's confirm that October 30th, we've asked Ellie to go through pre-processing, Chief Briggs, Richard, I don't know if you want to be a backup, just in case something happens, if you're available that day. And I also wanted to confirm...
Protagonist.
That was my question. Um, he did a wonderful job as acting selectman that day, and was very helpful in the election, so it's like, please pick Richard, because he's already got the training. So, okay, excellent.
And if any of us can't, you know, if we're in and out on election day for up to a couple hours, not a big deal, but if we need to be gone for a chunk of time, we need to appoint someone to replace us for a while, for a few hours or whatever.
So you need to think of that, chief, that if, if, forbid you were called away in an emergency, you need to appoint someone who is a, you know, registered voter.
Maybe look at a former selectman that may be able to come in for a few hours. It's going to be a wicked busy day, wicked.
Yes.
Wicked. The primary was pretty hectic.
It's very helpful with everyone having to wear masks, to be able to give everybody a break every now and then, so to have some extra people just makes it a little more palatable for everybody, since they're wearing masks all the time. Let's do the voting, as we all know.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So our next appointment is the, so do we have a specific person, or just the entire room?
Um, I, I've had two specific people, but it looks like we have one.
Okay, we're only going to have two people up front here, because we got to maintain social distancing, so if you got a comment you want to make, we'll open it up for discussion afterwards, but...
Can I take my mask off?
Absolutely.
Good evening. My name is James Borachial, and I live on 22 Jericho Drive in Kingston. The reason why we are here today, because it's our mayos. So basically, this all started, we've, we've been living there since 1993. We've been good neighbors, the only complaints we have is every once a year, he does a huge blast. I called Chief Briggs, Chief Briggs calls the fire department, they talk to him, we are okay with that. So we were okay living with that situation, no problems. Uh, the end of, uh, June, I heard some big machineries in the woods, that like, what is going on there? So, uh, the next day, I was able to see the machineries in the woods, okay? And then I realized that he was clearing a lot of victories, okay? And so I was getting a little nervous, so I called the selectman's office, and Mr. Richard Wilson here came over the next day. Now, the day before, I took measurements of how much wood he cleared, and it was 100 and, he was 190 feet away from my property. By the time Mr. Richard came down, he was 95 feet, which was the next day, from my property. And that was on this side. This is my property line right here, this is my property line here in the back. So he's 95 feet from here. In the back, that same day, he was 200 feet away from my property. By the time Mr. Richard came down, he was 25 feet from my property, in one day, okay? So basically, Mr. Wilson told him to stop cutting, because he needed to talk to the selectman's office and the planning board, which he did. And you guys agreed on him to stop, because he's working within 200 buffer zone, and he should not be doing that. And you also requested that he submits a plan to restore some of the trees, and during the meeting, you guys said, well, even if he doesn't plant trees, the shrubs will grow back. And now, he didn't, he didn't just take shrubs, he planted, he took big, big, big trees, okay? So, three weeks ago, I heard some machinery, so I'm thinking, okay, he stopped working, he's not doing anything, okay, we are waiting for him to plant trees. I go in the back... I go in the back, and he's already building roads and clearing all the sands, okay? And preparing that 200-foot buffer to start blasting. Now, I don't know when he's gonna blast, I don't know if he's gonna blast tomorrow, I don't know if he's gonna blast next year, but that piece of section of land right here, okay, which is 25 feet away from my property, is all cleared, okay, and landscaped to do blasting, not to plant trees. Okay, I have pictures and I have videos of machines working here, okay, within, okay? Within the buffer zone that you told him not to stop working, okay? So, when they do blasting now, just because there's no more trees here, okay? My whole house shakes, okay? I have pictures falling off the walls sometime. I called Chief Briggs, he comes down, but now, it's not, I'm not gonna be calling you once a year. I'm gonna be calling you every time they blast, because there's no more trees. There's no more trees, there's no more stumps, okay? There's nothing to stop the explosions from shaking my house, okay? Now, I know you guys don't live there, so you can't feel it, you can't hear it, but we do, okay? And so, my situation is, he agreed on presenting a plan to do something with, to restore the trees, has he done that?
Richard, I'll turn that over to Mr. Wilson.
Everything he says is right, he also agreed to stop cutting. What, I don't know the exact date, but what he said is probably the exact date. He agreed to stop all cutting at that point. And then he came in here to the board and we told him to do a plan, which he said he would do. And that was last we heard from him.
It's, I'm sorry, but he was, exactly what he said, he said, "I'll plant trees in the fall." So, but you guys requested from him a plan that is in writing, okay? To submit the plan and to tell you guys what he wants to do and how he's gonna restore some of the trees. Now, he hasn't done that, okay? And you gave him a date, that date was almost three months ago, okay? So, what I'm trying to tell you here, okay, and I mean this in a good way, okay? This is not something that... I'm kinda begging you to follow up with him, because if you don't, okay? He's gonna destroy my property, and my value of the house is gonna go from, for an example, 300 to 50 bucks, because no one would wanna live there, okay? So, I truly feel, okay, and I wanna say something. The reason why I love this country, because it has laws, okay? And when people break the laws, okay? There's leaders, okay, that are hired to enforce the law, that do their part, okay? And that's why we all live in peace, and that's why this is the greatest country in the whole world. So, but in this situation here, I feel that, I don't wanna say you guys are minimizing the situation, but anyway, I do, because right now, he's preparing that whole 200 foot, okay, of a buffer zone. Like, he's actually taking gravel, building roads, okay? Because he wants to expand his sample closer and closer. Now, there's another thing that came to my attention, okay? His sample is 700 feet from my dwelling, okay? In the back, right here.
You mean the quarry, right, the quarry you're talking about?
Yes, yes, where he does the explosions.
Yeah, the quarry.
The blasting, right here. He's 700 feet from my dwelling, okay? If he has to stay 200 feet away from my dwelling, okay? That means he cannot blast there anymore.
Actually, he has to stay 500 feet away from your property line. It's 500 feet for commercial activity.
Yes, sir, from property line.
It's not 200 feet, it's 500.
Right, that's it, so right now, he's even broken that. So he's exceeded that big time, he's exceeded it by at least 300 feet. So, like I said, I'm begging you to please take actions, because he's way up here. Financially, I'm way down here, and I wanna, I love Kingston, and I wanna live in Kingston in peace, okay? I don't wanna be, have to be dealing with him, because it's not my job to deal with him, okay? It is my property, it's that is being destroyed, and therefore, that's why I'm coming to you guys, okay? Asking your help with whatever you could do.
So, let me address your statements there. It's not that the town doesn't care. Mr. Tor Mayo is in kind of a weird situation where the Bureau of Mines for the state of New Hampshire, the feds, kind of control what he has going on there. It's always been a gray area for the town.
It's been a gray area, but we've recently found out that they control the safety of the quarry.
But, the point is, there is no site plan on Mr. Tor Mayo's property. What the town typically relies upon is a site plan. So if someone comes in, they wanna start business in town, and they go before the planning board, and agreement is reached between the planning board and the business applicant, and that's kind of the deal going forward between the business and the town. Mr. Tor Mayo doesn't have that. We took Mr. Tor Mayo at his word that he would restore the buffer that he was gonna put in there. He obviously did not, he went quite the other way with it. Now, I can tell you personally, I take that as an offense, that he sat there and lied to us, and then went and did a completely different thing. But, I will tell you, we're not blowing you off or anything like that. The town does not have resources to go and look into every single problem. You got five volunteers here who run the town. So, we all have full-time jobs, well, Ellie's retired. But, we all have full-time jobs, we don't have a code enforcement officer, we don't have someone who can just stay on top of these things constantly. It is a concern to us that this, one, that he came in here and lied to us, and two, that he did not submit a plan as we requested, and he has gone completely the other way and cut down trees right up to the edge of your property. So, what I can tell you, and I'm gonna go ahead and speak for the board here, because I'll do it if no one else wants to, we will follow up with this and we will find a resolution for it.
Didn't we send him a letter a couple weeks ago?
Yeah, and obviously that...
So I did, I did call, speak with him, to see where he stood with that plant. And he said he was hiring engineers, as I told you.
It doesn't work though, Chief.
I know, but, and then I did a site walk with both of these gentlemen as well. And, and they measured to both posses, and I think yours was actually close.
Yeah, about 348 feet from my wall to my dwelling.
So it looks like to me, and I might be mistaken, but it looks to me like he's trying to expand the quarry closer to their lot line, sort of looked like to me, anyway. It looked like there was some recent cutting down there. And I had never gone out onto that property before. Did you own that property when you went out? So it's very close, they're...
I actually had it on the Tor Mayo site and came in with the grant, so.
So I went down, two weeks ago maybe, was it two weeks, or were you gonna...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. We walked to the line, and it's not very far to the edge of that quarry.
Those pictures, you can see right through, there's the...
You saw the pictures?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, what I can tell you is this becoming a pattern of him being a bad neighbor. And you can pass that along to Mr. Tor Mayo? That. You're seeing more than I do. Said he's gonna do, so...
So, we're not, sorry, not to interrupt you, but we're not really asking him to stop working. All we're asking him to do, or asking you to please help us with...
Well, that's what the town's asking him to do, is to stop what he's doing and come in with a plan, because he's doing stuff that's negatively affecting his neighbors.
Right, but, can I please ask another question? Now, if he, if he breaks the laws of the town, right? If there's no repercussion to what he does, he's just gonna continue on doing it, because he doesn't, he has not showed any, any faith that he was going to take care of what he did.
Welcome to our daily nightmare.
Chief Briggs, you mentioned that...
You know what I mean?
Coming down the business, really, we're in the middle of how many court cases right now? People, I mean, it's not a secret. If someone wants to be a jerk and not follow the rules, then they can drag it over years.
I'm afraid though, by the time you guys decide to do that, if that happens, right? It'll be too late for me. So with him paying a fine of $100,000, it's not going to do me any good, okay? Because then he'll be like, so close to my property right now. Can we please, I don't know if Matt is going to speak after, but they did a blast today, okay? He has pictures of his doors shaken, and you should hear the sound. All I'm saying is that, that 200 foot of trees that he took down, which are huge pine trees, okay? Basically, just opened up the sound and the vibration in our house tenfold. And it's scary, like I, if I'm in the basement, I jump, okay? It's like, oh my gosh, but now they've been letting us know, because we had requested that they would, that they call us, because one time, my wife got so scared, like she was terrified, she didn't know what to ask. That's how scary it is. So...
Well, I think... I can play the video, I can, just, I recorded today's blast and how loud it is, just to give you a...
So if they're, I didn't mean to interrupt, I apologize. If they're in violation of town ordinances, then we notify the state. The state regulates the people that blast. The state will stop anyone from blasting on that property until it's resolved. So my recommendation is that the board, or I can, if the board chooses to have me do that, notify the state under fire, that they're in violation of town ordinances based upon being too close to the property line, therefore, it's creating a health and safety issue for the neighbors. And that we're recommending that they stop main drilling and blasting, from doing any more blasting on that site until the issue's resolved, because they're regulated by state fire.
Will they back us up?
The Fire Marshal's Office, I've spoken to him several times, and Graham has.
So would.
So, but, and so, just one other thing, so, really, this is regulated by fire, the fireside, so... So if you would like, and the board would like, you can get Graham involved as well, because he's been involved, the fire chief. I would recommend that I meet with Graham, that we call the Fire Marshal's Office, to have them, if the board issues a cease and desist, stop blasting, and have the Fire Marshal's Office enforce them.
I think we also need to stop any commercial activity within 500 feet of the property line.
But that's the rule, yeah. So I think, I think you have to do it with a cease and desist, and I think we have to stop the blasting through the Fire Marshal's Office, because they hold the license for main drilling and blasting.
So, sorry, not to interrupt again, but the gentleman from the blasting company was talking to me today, and he told me that his blast today was .4, and they could actually blast up to two, okay? I don't know what that means, but I told him, and then he said to me, he said, "Your house might be sitting on ledge, so when we blast, all the ledge moved." But he also told me that he has, he has a contract with Tor Mayo, and he has to do what Tor Mayo tells him to do. And as long as he is not blasting on my property, he could actually blast one foot away from my property line.
I think a guy with explosives licenses probably made you an erroneous statement there, because he answers to a lot more than Mr. Tor Mayo. Yeah, he, for his license.
Yeah, he would lose his ability to do that. So the state, the state Fire Marshal's Office regulates him. So if the town calls and says he's in violation of our town ordinances, and that we want the state to stop him from blasting, then they could do that by, because they hold the power to revoke his license.
I don't really wanna take too much of your time, I know you guys have been working all day. Do you understand how bad the situation is here?
Yes.
I actually walked the property and measured with them how close, how closely they were blasting to their house. I, your house is very close, I'd never gone out behind your house before, so walking that on his back lawn, you can actually see where they're blasting, well, not blasting, but they can see the edge of the...
So, Mr. Briggs, right now, they are doing commercial work within 500 feet?
Right.
Okay?
In one of those pictures, you can actually see a piece of equipment through the trees, a yellow piece of equipment, like a tractor of some sort. You can see it right from my kitchen window, you could never see that before.
It was clear, I mean, you could look through all the pictures, you saw clear through.
I mean, it's, Chief Briggs, you mentioned potentially having a third-party engineer go out and do an official measurement, since we're not able to step on his property without trespassing to get an official measurement. But I think those pictures definitively conclude that they are well within the 200-foot buffer. And those were taken from my property line, and from Jimmy's property line.
I can't take pictures and walk on the line, because it would be trespass, and I can't take...
That's what we did, yeah, that's why we did, yeah.
So, I mean, the town could also ask Dennis to take a look at it for his professional advice, or he's the town engineer, if the board chose to do that. So there's several things you could do. I think a call to Mr. Tor Mayo, telling him he's in violation, if the board would like me to do that tomorrow as well.
I can join you on that call.
I don't think a call's enough, we've already told him that.
Well, but I think...
Well, I think the call telling him what we're planning on doing, you know? Might be a good time to work on Dor Road, Rich. You know, I mean, I...
So, yeah, so I think, I think, you know, those, by putting, we make the call, we call the Fire Marshal's Office with Graham, because he is part of, to regulate fire, and so ask them to withhold their permit.
I think we need to send him a letter about the 500 feet, within 500 feet of the line, any commercial activity.
And I would, I would recommend that Dennis represent the town, because he's gonna have to go out and look at that, and he, with permission of Mr. Tor Mayo, can walk onto the property.
He needs Tor Mayo to say you can go on there.
Yeah.
They've also got a lot of things they can do from the property line now, range finders and stuff.
But that would be Dennis, that would be Dennis, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's a lot of stuff they can do without getting on the property.
So my recommendation is that we also have Dennis go out, take a look at, and have report back to the board.
Yeah, well, let's, and call, that cease and desist has gotta go out like tomorrow, not in two weeks.
I agree.
Yeah, and they're, they're supposed to give us an hour notice, I think today, they, will they give you about 15 minutes or so, or...
So they give the town two days' notice, I believe it's two, isn't it, Rich? So the town is notified two days prior to any blasting, because that's what they're supposed to do, I believe, by law, but I'd have to double-check that.
Did they today?
So they notify, they notify fire first, because they regulate them through the Fire Marshal's Office, and they notify police. So, so they notified, I believe, on Friday afternoon that they were gonna blast today. When did you get notified?
So, so, so what they told me is they usually notify the fire department 24 hours in advance, and they call us that same morning. But today, they didn't, for some reason, it was an automatic phone call, the machine sends it, and she apologized, but they did notify us three minutes before the explosion.
So I believe the call went out to fire police on Friday.
Do they have to give any kind of map as to where they're gonna blast, or just a blasting on property?
There's certain things, they have to send a horn, sound a horn, somebody, if somebody does it, they have to say we're blasting so far from the property line or anything. Well, I don't, I don't think, even though, and I didn't know they were on your property with the seismographs or whatever it is.
Yeah, so we recently discovered last week, one of the site supervisors came out, and they guys said, "Since 2002, the owners prior to us on 24 Jericho, they requested they drill the blasting on site with a seismograph or every blast." So they've been doing that now 18 years, I just found this out last week. But they come out for every blast, and I just would like to clarify, this is not every once a year or an occasional. We've had 12 blasts just this year, and they are known to go into no water. And the call today, it meant 12:53 for one o'clock blast, and I had gentlemen in my driveway at 11:45.
Mark Dinkels.
So, so every time prior to blasting, they're on your property?
Yes, sir. And only after many calls to the police department, the fire department, and Tor Mayo, I've finally known that a supervisor may be drilling a blast about six years ago. And since then, I at least received the courtesy of a phone call one hour before the blast, because there are people that come on my property. Unbeknownst to me, apparently, per the request of two previous homeowners ago.
So I think there's a couple, two or three different issues with what we're speaking about, so that's why I suggested that we have Dennis get down and take a look, and do the other things that are suggested.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but I'd really like to stress what Mr. Wilson's recommended. Again, the blasting is, a couple times here and there, the constant noise now from machinery all day, because the trees are gone, is, it's almost unbearable. I would love to play an audio, if you can hear the difference. I, I would love to play an audio, if you can hear the difference between quarter or four in the afternoon versus five oh three, when they're done for the day.
So I think, I think it's based upon what I saw, I think it's a couple of different issues. I think the noise, based upon the buffer, is gone.
Yes.
That's the noise. But I think you're absolutely correct, in seeing what I saw and the amount of ledge that comes in there, I think the vibe, most of the vibration you're getting, as they blast closer, it shakes even more. And they're, obviously they're coming closer based upon what you've shown me.
So that's to absorb that shock.
That's correct, that's correct, because they blast closer, that's all the issue there. So I think you get a couple of different issues. So, why don't you give us time tomorrow, make some calls, and then we have a cease and desist letter to send out, and Susan has your contact information.
Can we just, uh, please, let you hear the blast today? Takes two seconds.
So this is from my kitchen window.
You could actually see the door vibrate.
That was massive.
Can you, can you hear the door shake? That's how it is every time they blast.
You, uh, maybe, maybe get, um, an email address, or maybe send that to Susan.
You're Matt, right?
Yes.
As I've got.
Yeah, I can send that to you.
Okay.
Did you, did you send it to us already?
I have not, no, I took that this-
Do you have any photographs that you've taken that we could get a copy?
I, I've sent photographs.
There are a whole bunch of them, and they were attachments.
There's a copy, I think.
Your microphone is here, yeah.
Okay, well, let us do our thing, and, uh, hopefully we'll have some answer within a week. Kevin?
The only thing I want to say, I've been here for over two and a half years, and I've never heard anyone from Jericho complain. It sounds like you people have put up with a lot of stuff, you've never complained about Torneo's pit, and he seems to have taken advantage, and, you know, we've, Mr. Wilson came to us right away and mentioned about the tree clearing, and we called him in, and we felt he was gonna be honest and said, you know, well, come forward and plan. For you to come forward tonight and tell me not only that he did not bring us a plan, but he's doing work closer to your border, and hearing stories about you're supposed to get two days' notice for a blast and get less than an hour, I'm very disappointed, and I think we should follow through as heavy as we can for the town. You know, it is limited, as you said, but I don't think we should give anything up on this one, because it's obvious you've dealt with a lot of blasting, the whole time you've been residents there. It sounds like you've been more than better neighbors to that gentleman, um, and the town needs to act.
Have you, have any of you ever been down in that quarry? Have you ever been in there? Huge, huge.
I have seen, yeah, I've seen the Google map of it.
It's, it's huge, you, it's, uh, and it's a big, what faces their property? I mean, you drive down and down and down and down, it's like, I can't tell you how deep it goes, but it goes way down.
How do we replace the trees? I mean, I mean, can we put, can they, can we make them put berms up in the bag to block the noise?
I think the issue, the noise is an issue, but I think replacing the buffer of X amount of feet is the bigger issue, because when you go down into that quarry, I mean, you keep, you're down the bottom, and you're looking up, and it's like, I mean, you're way, way down.
You, you can't replace the trees.
Right.
You can't, you make them mill the wall, maybe, I don't know. A wall's big.
What scares me is what's he clearing all that for? What's his, uh-
Well, especially if he's within five hundred feet.
But the quarry's over here, and he's doing mostly clearing back over here, so he's not gonna go that way.
The quarry, the side, the big sidewall of the quarry is facing them.
Right, I know, but it's-
Mr. Wilson, the quarry is here.
Right.
Right, and this is my lot here.
And the cutting's around-
The cutting's here, but all this wood right here, that's all there is. So this is where he's building now, he's expanding on this side.
That's where he's entered the stone wall.
Yes, sir, yeah.
So, my opinion is, is they're trying to move that quarry wall closer to-
But they can't, I mean, you gotta stop that, because technically they can't go any closer.
Exactly, technically they can't.
He's not supposed to go any closer.
Because he's already within-
Yeah, well, we have a lot of issues here, and we can theorize what he's doing all night, but let's give a call.
So, so I, this is my first time coming here, okay? And I, I, I really appreciate your time, and I also, uh, am very glad and thankful to hear what you guys said. So I'm just gonna leave it in your hands.
Just one, a couple last points that I had. Um, you mentioned, uh, there was an authorization to clear brush, but I, my question would be, was there ever an authorization to cut these trees? Was that ever issued to, uh, Torneo?
Who said there was an authorization to clear brush?
There was an application, there was an intent to cut filed by Mr. Torneo after we had already received notice that he was cutting into the buffer, and we had not signed that.
He did sign, yeah.
That, that he was not given authorization.
So he was not given authorization, there wasn't order of that, okay, so, because I would have thought that-
He has one of those things here that are problems.
Yeah, I would have thought at that point someone would have taken into account the town ordinance, the two hundred foot buffer, and said, whoa, whoa, before you cut, let's, let's review this.
I think, I think what happened, I think, when you called, and Rich and I went down, then the, then the, I think the intent to cut came in after.
Came in afterwards, yeah.
Yeah, it came in after, so it wasn't signed.
Okay. Now, he had pulled the permit.
He, he pulled the permit, but it wasn't signed, based upon, based upon the information that Rich went out and looked at, at the lot lines and how much was cut, so it wasn't approved.
I'm sorry, he, he pulled the permit before he cut the road?
He filed, he filed, he filed an intent to cut, which came in either right at the same time that we had the complaints, we went down and checked it, and then didn't sign it, because he had cut too close into the buffer. We didn't approve it.
So I guess, I guess one of the questions I have, I guess maybe all neighbors from the neighborhood, is that correct? So, just from my point of view, because I've never been on any property, but, and I realize why it affects you, because you're the closest to pieces of property, how does it affect the other neighbors, and what does it do at your homes?
My floor's shaking now.
We haven't found a cap for today, anyone else? Uh, I don't feel anything, with Jim's next four neighbors, we have an extra, like, fifty feet maybe, the barriers.
Back, yeah, you're the other, you're the other side?
When the blast happened today, they really did, they really did shake the floor. Let's come out of Jericho, we're close to the terminus, with a circle, with, uh, Matt's area, Jim, and, uh, and we're at the cave on the, uh, on the outside.
On the corner?
And, and we, we, we took the blast zone, and we have the same course.
So how many, how many feet do you think that you are from the blast zone?
I, I don't know, I wouldn't be able to judge, yeah. They did, and they are here, but I, uh, in the moment, they've approached our property, and it's not that far away. I can see where Jim is concerned, because of that extra fifty, a hundred yards or whatever force the, the site, so.
He's about eight tons, eight tons.
Eight, eight hundred feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're next.
Yeah.
And ours?
And then you have, you have-
Yeah, we live at number fourteen, and a couple of our feet that cleared up from our line is-
You're fourteen, number fourteen on the corner?
Uh, it's kind of midway between you going on us.
He's like two houses down.
Oh, okay, sure.
So, yeah, they, uh, you know, I don't know how many feet it is, but they definitely cut back there, it was all the way down to, if you make the point of we go up to the other side, it's cut down, that almost looks wrong.
I mean, we're talking about a company with ample resources here, and, you know, ignorance of, of the law is not an excuse to break the law. I think due diligence should have been done on his part to ensure that the proper measures were taken before he just went and decided to clearcut all these trees and affect all these folks. Additionally, um, I wanted to point out that there are some wetlands in this area, and this company has been in violation of wetlands, damaging and destroying wetlands in the past. Lawsuits filed by the EPA, I think, back in twenty-
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So that's another concern, whether wetlands are also being damaged by some of this clearcutting that he's doing.
I'm all set.
Great, thank you, thanks for coming in.
So Susan will hear from you.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, San Antonio.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that ended, that brings us to the first part. If there's anyone who'd like to say anything in the crowd, you have three minutes. Five dollars? Sell it to, to you.
Rebecca's here because of the unanticipated-
Yes.
So, are public comment?
It can get on the agenda, so, even I didn't cross bases, tried your today, but I-
What are you before?
My apologies. Well, we're talking about plowing, procedures for plowing private property. We talked about, uh, possibly it being a problem down the pave drive. So this is, this comes from, um, the National Municipal Association, some of their recommendations. Getting very careful how you, how we go about doing plowing on private roads, roads that are class five town roads. Yeah, so you're set, in your free time, just take a look at this and read it. There's three different methods, three different processes, National Municipal Association has made a recommendation here how to do it. This is procedure, you need to make sure procedures follow, there's got to be notices, because what you don't want to do is end up, if you, if you do it improperly, technically, you're leaving that liberal judge to say, okay, the town spent money, that means it's now a class five road, developer no longer has to continue completing the road. So it would be possible for putting the cul-de-sac in, the final, and he couldn't take his bond or anything like that, so, you gotta be very careful. Hopefully it doesn't come to this.
Yeah, just for the good of the board, so this came up in the inspectors meeting, a potential issue that we may-
I don't even know what to say, I don't know what to talk about.
A potential issue on a private road where someone said they weren't gonna plow, um, and so Rich is just presenting this to the board, because it would be the board's decision to go on to a private road to plow for emergency services to get through, and-
And we do that now.
We do not do that.
We do not do that.
And it's not something we make a habit of, but the primary objective in Rich researching this is to see what the town's options are, since it may potentially be a problem, and what, what the legal ramifications are, so thank you for doing that.
That's, that's all it's about, so just-
So I, I've got a question, because I took a call on last week, and I'm sure he said he spoke with you, and if you can tell me if in fact the court ruled that the homeowners on that particular road own up to half of the middle of the lane, did you talk about that at all?
So, doing some further research, because what I was told didn't make a whole lot of sense, there's another whole chapter, um, I should have made a copy of that, by N H M A, and it's called Ownership of Freehold Soil. Basically, normally when your planning board approves a subdivision, what should happen is there needs to be a finite amount of time to construct that, and my suggestion for planning board is gonna be, from now on, two years, maybe one year, depends on the size of the project, from start to finish. If it doesn't get finished, then there's gonna be some repercussions, you could be, you lose your site, site plan, or, you know, something's gonna happen. It's described in this book, this book is, uh, from N H M A, it's all illegal people, and they've taken all the rules and regulations, court orders, past court cases, precedents, you put that together. And so, because this thing has gone on so long, it's, it's technically a paper road. I didn't realize, I thought paper roads were only roads that, ancient roads that hadn't been developed, and that's not the case. As soon as a planning board approves the plan, the road isn't built, so it immediately becomes a paper road. Until such time as the road is built, and then the town ends up taking it over, we get a deed for that road from the original sub-developer who owns the land, and then it becomes, after your acceptance of this board, it becomes a class five town road, which we own a deed for, and then the homeowners don't technically own to the center of the road. I'm no lawyer, but that's how I'm kinda, I'm kinda reading all this stuff.
So, so the gentleman over there spoke to you, that had the outhouse on his front lawn, was, his attorney called me, was speaking about that he owned up to half of the middle of the road?
Yeah.
So there is some factual-
There is some, it's kind of a gray area, it's only for a short, a short period of time, from the time that anyone approves to the time the town accepts the road.
So you're saying that because we haven't accepted that road in a lengthy period of time, that could be a paper road where he does own it?
Well, it's, it's automatically, as soon as the planning board approves the plan, the plot, from that second on, because it's on a plan, it's been approved by the planning board, recorded and all that stuff, it becomes a paper road, because the road hasn't been built.
So both sides own up to half of the road?
Supposedly.
So let me ask you this-
I don't understand that, because the guy that actually develops the land still owns all the property that isn't sold, but there's some, it's just weird court, put us in court rulings.
So back to-
It's basically should be pushing people to finish the roads quicker.
Absolutely.
The towns can take them over.
Well, back to, back to plowing and maintaining, so if that's true, and the guy that lives on this side owns up to fifty percent of the road, and the guy on this side owns up to fifty percent of the road, then it is-
So my three minutes are over, I'm all done, I'm sorry.
Want the liability of the road?
Keep track for the work. I, I don't think we need to make a decision on this tonight. I appreciate Rich bringing this in, I would appreciate if the board read this, and when the time comes, hopefully it doesn't, we're aware of what legal we talked about, that we're ready.
We still have a year between on your, finish code, right? So it's gonna be at least a year before, a year of construction, then the secondary, I would think.
That way it'll actually mean-
So it's gonna be that long before you take over a road actually, no matter what?
So that court hearing was done, was concluded?
I, I don't know that, I, I, there has been a court hearing, and the original sub, the guy that built the road has been ordered to plow the road, but then there's been this other court case that they basically told him that he can't go on that road, because it's their property, the homeowners own the middle road, and they don't want him on that property. I, I think, again, I have not seen any other verdict from a court, from a second court We don't, it's speculation on my part, but I believe that to be true.
All righty. Thank you, Rich.
Second item, if you don't mind, if you indulge me?
Well, your three minutes were up.
Allow us for that, but that was for that anyway. So, um, I've been made aware of a grant possibly to pay for up to half of one of my big plow trucks, hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I intend on filling out the paperwork, has to be in by November sixteenth. The only problem with that is there isn't money in the cap reserve fund presently, uh, to fund the truck. It would be dependent on the voter approving the cap reserve fund that I put in every year, and every year they say yes. I, I can't, I'm not gonna say that the voter's gonna say yes this year, I don't know if it's gonna happen, but I'm planning on moving forward, unless you folks tell me not to, to go ahead and try and get this grant, because half the truck is a pretty good deal. And it comes from, um- And it comes from, the federal government is trying to get the old, the older polluting trucks off the road. So this money's become available. If I get it, basically, I think 15 days after I take delivery and put the new truck in service, they will actually want to witness that truck being destroyed. Cutting a three-inch hole in the block and some of the frame cut in half.
On the old truck?
The old truck.
Can't keep it and put a tire drive on it?
Nope.
Is putting it on top of the bonfire an acceptable means of disposal?
Former moderator, can we put on his request for his annual fund that he does that we have matching our grant to pay by a truck? Can that be in the wording?
Yes.
What year is the truck, Rich?
The truck I'd be replacing is a 2003. We have a 97 that's still in service that is basically like this spare truck. That really doesn't qualify because they want one that's actively in service every day. They don't want, you know, something that's parked off in the back forty. They're not replacing that. Something that's actually in service that you...
I think voters saw that getting that grant money if they approved it, they approved it.
I think so too.
So that's what's going on. Just wanted to let you know, if you tell me no, don't apply for it, I won't, but I plan on moving forward.
Oh, go for it. I say absolutely.
All right, thank you. That's it for me.
So it's a $100,000 truck for which we get $90,000 from the feds?
$180,000. My big truck's about $180,000.
$360? Okay. It's not like my Acura, huh?
This is a point big, they're pretty old truck.
Sorry, please, a wilderness away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Can we get rid of it by going up to seal pit?
Thank you, Richard.
Here for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Rebecca's here.
Good evening. So I'm here to represent Tarmo Industries.
Okay.
Yep. Just a correction. I submitted a timber tax certificate, or the timber intent to the board and it was signed. I have the certificate right here. For the tree cutting on the property, it was approved. I know we are within the 200-foot, regenerative buffer, me and Rich agreed on that. On behalf of the company, I'm working with SEC Associates in Plastow for a restoration plan. As far as noise goes, I know the neighbors are complaining about the noise. What the tree's missing, I get it. There's going to be an increase of volume from the quarry. It's just plain math. So if there's anything that we could propose to the board as far as what a restoration project looks like, an earthen berm? If you want us to dig the stumps out of the ground that we cut, pile them up and make a contoured berm to appease the neighbors with sound and sound restrictions? I know just from working in construction, the big pile there, it's going to act like a muffler and a car, you know? And it's the large trees. So...
The big question is why is blasting going on now with the 500 feet?
It's not.
That blasting's 500 feet away from the property?
I have documentation from main drilling and blasting. I have it on my desk in Kingston. And they have taken Google Maps and they have a program, almost like an AutoCAD, to where they can determine the distance from a dwelling to where they're blasting. And it is...
Not the dwelling to property line?
Yes, I have that. I have that right on my desk.
And then why are they able to look out and see construction vehicles within 200 feet working?
Well, because there's no trees there anymore.
Well, they're within two of each other. So one good question. So on that face wall, the big face wall faces their property, are you, are you still taking rock off that wall?
On the wall that abuts their side?
Yes.
Yes, we are. That's where...
That's the problem. Because you're within 500 feet of the property line on that face.
I should say that's one of the problems because grandfather was in here telling us that he was going to have a restoration plan and he was going to stop cutting trees.
I know, here.
Yep, and so then what happened? He went and cut more trees.
No, he didn't. We stopped as soon as...
Sounds like you're just cleaning up.
We just cleaned up and we have our own equipment there.
So I think the big problem, so their concern, that you're going to move that big face wall closer and closer, and you're already too close within that buffer.
Okay.
So that, where their, where their lot line is to the face wall of that, that side of the quarry, the deep side of the quarry, that's the part that you're in violation of because you're closer to the lot line than you're supposed to be.
Okay.
So, so the first thing you need to do is not touch that wall at all. That's number one. So, and if I'm speaking out of line? So that's, that would be the first thing that I would do because you're in violation. You're closer than 500 feet, am I right? 500 feet, Rich? 500 feet from the, so it's not their house, it's the property line.
Okay.
So one of the gentlemen owns to a point out there. And the other gentleman on the other side owns across all the way. So both of them, actually there's three, three people that own on that face. There's three residents. So you're closer on that line than 500 feet. So that's, that's the issue. And, and I think, I don't want to speak for them, but I think their fear is that you're going to keep moving that face wall even closer. That's why you're cutting trees and so that's what the theory is here. That you're cutting, you're going to keep coming closer and closer and closer to the lot line and you're already supposed to be 500 feet from the lot line.
And what, where that equipment's running, they say is within 500 feet of the lot line. Commercial activity that's, you know, where we walk to that cornerstone wall is activity back around to the right.
Right. Well, we cut the trees there, Rich.
Right.
We need a spot to get around the back of that pond in order to clean the back of the pond. We can't, we can't fly a helicopter out there.
So I would guess, and I'm only speaking for myself, and I need you to think about this, we can back to your grandfather. I would recommend that you allow the town to come in and take pictures of that face wall abutting the neighbor's property. Okay? And that you not operate anymore within that distance. Because if we serve with a cease and desist to shut that whole place down, you can't blast.
Right. If?
Well, I'm just saying. So what I would, and I'm just throwing this out to the board too, that you allow me, anybody else to come down and take pictures of that face wall.
Yes, we can tell.
You cannot do any more operation within that face wall facing their property or on that property. As long as you don't touch that wall and anything within that 500 feet, the other side of the quarry will not affect that 500 feet or the blasting. That's what I would recommend to the board. So if we had that agreement with you and your grandfather that you not blast anymore on that side of the quarry?
Yeah.
And within any, nothing, not even walk on that property within 500 feet from that face in, then I would be happy with not sending a cease and desist.
Okay.
But you would have to allow the town onto your property to take photographs into the quarry to show where it sits now and to do, and to monitor that weekly.
Okay. And I think it would be wise to verify and validate these measurements.
Well, I think we could do that. I mean, I was out there and they measured it. So what I saw was, what they were saying was true. And they're talking, so the 500 feet is from where your property line is to the edge of the quarry where you are now.
Okay.
Close.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to walk out there.
Right.
Seriously. You wouldn't want to walk 500 feet to blast because you couldn't make it.
Okay.
So what I, what I would recommend would be to allow the town to come out, take pictures, monitor that whole side, not work within that 500 feet from their property line. And you're going to be out into the quarry. And then that, if the board is happy with that, to have me monitor it or someone else monitor it every, every week, take pictures of it to show that you're not blasting on the quarry on that wall and to show that you're not doing any work there with the permission of you and Red. Then I would say if they're willing to do that and allow us to monitor it, that they be allowed to work on the far side of every place within that 500 feet.
I think you're speaking as one individual right now.
Yeah.
I would be concerned because what they presented to us tonight was after we told the stock to we can figure this out, now you're approaching, they said you're building a road within 200 feet of their property. That's what they said, the machine's not looking 500, within 200 feet. I would say until those neighbors are satisfied, you do all everything that you had of goodwill, like taking down the buffer zone on your own, you storage that on your own. I think you need to come to some agreement with the residents before I would allow you to do anything.
What they did is they pushed a lot of the stumps and stuff out of their property out further.
Hmm.
So when you walk up to the wall from the neighbor's property, was that there, Rich, were you sorry? A lot of this...
I don't think, well, I don't want to speak for the neighbors either, but I don't think that's what they're complaining about other than the fear of it moving forward. I think what they're talking about's back by the lake, the pond that he talks about.
I would think...
What their, what their concern is that the quarry wall keeps moving closer to their property.
With that, and the road that they're putting in back there on pond.
They, they told me they weren't as concerned about, well, the stuff that's already been cut, they're not going to do anything about it because they've said they're going to replant or something.
Yeah, but we need a plant, I mean, it's been two months. I mean, I'm sorry. It's been two months.
One, what day did I get out of here? Last week, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday. And he told me that he was hiring engineers to do the plan.
Yes.
I spoke to him la, uh, not last, yeah, last week.
They played an audio. You know, I just don't understand how, you know, they're not getting two days' notice. They're getting less than an hour's notice of what they want to our attention tonight. Then they played the... That it's not really, you know, you shot yourself in the foot when you got rid of the buffer zone. Are you going to rectify that? I think that's between you and the neighbors. But again, I will speak for myself on this one of five, that I say no leverage at all for this to rectify. I will stop everything until you fix this.
We had a blast supervisor at Jericho Road this morning from 9:15 to about 12:55 when they were getting ready to blast with the neighbors, the whole time. Meanwhile, they were calling our main office in Methuen, wondering who these folks were. They said they were unmarked vehicles, but they had main door and blasting shirts on on their property. So the element of surprise there doesn't really hold water because we've been doing what we can do to help.
If you call the resident a liar, they said they got an hour's notice.
Seven minutes.
Seven.
12:53 she was notified.
Yeah. Well, if you call those people, they're a liar, I don't know what to tell you.
Okay. Well, I'm just here to say that, you know, we're trying to work as good, be good neighbors to them.
I think you got to try.
You're right on about the, I understand, in operations, a blast is, is, it could be powerful, but today's size, we've read only a 3.8, a .38.
I get it, but you're hearing a lot worse now that the trees are gone.
Right.
Well, the feeling too, because they're closer.
And there's no trees, did it?
There's none.
Look, I worked in a quarry. I understand what you go through, but in this densely settled an area, you got to work with the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Now, this is issue number two you're having with your neighbors?
Yeah.
In a different neighborhood. You're not a good neighbor right now. And I mean, these aren't people who just call and complain all the time and they, as Mr. St. James pointed out, two and a half years he's been on the board. Nobody, none of these people have ever called the selectman's office and complained about blasting or anything like that until their backyard disappeared and they could hear it like it was on top of. It's not good optics. And you're putting the town in a position where we're going to have to do something because we have residents who are very unhappy. And so it's October 18th, 19th? The tree planting window is getting pretty small going forward.
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify because the last, when me, when me and my grandfather sat here, it was sort of in the air about what a restoration project would entail. And someone had also mentioned that leaving the trees alone after they are cut, they reproduce faster than excavating the area, removing the stumps, hauling the stumps away, replanting trees and hoping that they grow.
Okay, and what he was referencing is a storage facility that had overcut their area.
Yeah.
Not an active quarry that produces a lot of noise with the equipment.
Okay.
So what he was talking about was in reference to that. And what we had said to you guys was hire an engineer and get someone who can address the issue. And we put the ball in your court. We're not going to sit here and tell you how to do it, but we needed a plan going forward and we didn't get one.
Okay.
And so that's, that's the problem for us on the tree cutting.
I mean, so now fairness, I did, I did call him two weeks ago. And he told me he was hiring two engineers to do that plan. That's what Red told me.
Yep.
My suggestion is on the, on the tree thing, just put a huge stockade fence.
Not a stockade fence?
You need a, you need a timber fence.
Well, as far as noise.
Yeah. You need soundproof for like you see a silent highway.
I would have received a big berm and that.
But just, just for the board, we're measuring two different things. So we're measuring a seismic reading in decibels, which is a vibration in noise.
Yes.
So it's something maybe we, I could have my engineer look at it. The main concern was what, shaking or it being loud?
Both.
Okay.
Not having the notification of the blasting. Pictures, door frames, you know, everything getting racked in their house. One guy's cat, by the way. But that's, it's all part of the, you know, the trees getting disappeared and all of a sudden this work being done on that edge of the property right behind them is becoming very concerning to them. That's the issue. So it's the whole thing.
If I were to send out a notice all your neighbors and call a meeting and see what you can do to address the concerns?
Well, they, they don't want that. They want the town to take action, which indicated tonight, so.
True.
And nobody's going to be happy if the town take action. It's not going to make...
I mean, the only, if we serve with a cease and desist?
If?
That's closed. That all areas closed down, you can't operate there. That, that would be number one. That's why I suggested to the board, if they're willing to not blast on that slope and not do any work whatsoever. And again, my suggestion was to send Dennis down there. He's the professional that knows a lot more than I know.
Well, and in fairness, I mean, we're only getting their side of the story, but we need to be able to look at it from your, your property and get actual measurements and see what we're really talking about here. Because obviously if someone's sitting in their house and they hear a blast, they're going to say, oh, it's like right behind my house and it could be 800 feet away. So we need to verify that you are operating legally within that.
You're an honest gentleman, in fact. Are you closer than 500 feet?
No.
From that face wall to their property?
I can show you in the, in spots. There is one spot where they have the 200-foot regenerative buffer.
I know, I'm talking about where the face wall is where you're blasting.
To the property.
Their property line is less than 500 feet.
Yes.
It is. So that's the big problem. So what I'm recommending to the board is that you not blast on that side because you're in violation there. The far end, the far side, you're not in violation. So what makes you in violation is working on that face wall towards their property. See what I'm saying?
Yes.
And so if no work was allowed to be done on that face wall other than them restoring what needs to be restored in there, I think we're moving forward on fixing both of the problems.
But I think it would show the neighbors that you're putting good faith efforts to restore the situation.
Absolutely.
Cut down on the sound.
So we would need permission from you and Red to enter the property, take some pictures tomorrow to make sure you're not touching the face wall. And, and then that plan that Red's having done to come up with, how it's going to be fixed.
There's some kind of deadline on that plan.
So, I mean, that's, that would be my recommendation to the board.
I can support that.
That I'll go down if you get permission. If I get permission to go on your property, take photos, I will do that.
But I would get Dennis Kretel as well. You want to have the town engineer in there.
Yeah.
And that way, no offense, but that way we know exactly what, where you are now. And then that becomes a demarcation mark.
Okay.
You know, no offense. I mean, you've been in town for many years. It would be a shame now we're going to have a bad problem. I don't want to have a problem, but I don't want to have neighbors as upset as they are, they can see right through from their house to your lots.
So do you want to call in the morning and let me know that Red was in favor of that?
Yeah.
And then I would tell Dennis if that's what the board would like.
Yeah.
And just one more comment. As far as the wetlands go in Kingston, we're under strict supervision by not only the Environmental Protection Agency, but our own environmental firm, MAB Industrial. And I'm in the works, me personally, of being a certified erosion, stormwater and sediment inspector. And there is no, and I mean no infractions, of wetlands at 18-door road, period.
Well... Well.
There you used to be, and we learned our lesson, Rich.
But if you're within so many feet of that pond, you're, if the pond's got any kind of wildlife in it at all.
Yeah, but that's why we needed access to go around it, not through it.
But you can't even get access within so many feet. Well, they're strict with all about-
I understand.
The distance that you have to stay away from water.
I understand.
The statement was made by one of the residents, we're hoping we can address the bigger issues, and that's a non-issue. We'd probably recommend that that, you ensure that's a non-issue.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure of it.
Yes.
So again, so, so Dennis Kretel, the town engineer, and I would come onto your property, take photographs, right? And touch that face wall.
Okay.
Okay. And if that's what the board wants me to do, I'll do that, if not.
I think you should do that.
We need to get measurements and pictures from that side of the property, and then I, I would expedite the restoration plan.
Okay.
And I think it'd be worthwhile just reaching out to them and, and letting them know what you're doing to restore the property, I think a communication from you guys would be very beneficial.
To the neighbors.
To the neighbors.
And a 24-hour call from your office to each and every one of those neighbors.
Fair enough.
So if you're going to blast on any of the firewalls, not the face wall, because I'm going to be taking pictures.
Right. See, just to get back at that, chief, um, Maine Drilling and Blasting has taken that responsibility of notifying the neighbors, they do, uh-
Would you be telling them you want 24 hours notice?
Okay.
You have the, you're hired.
Correct.
So, I mean, we're going to shut you down with the fire marshal's office, who's going to take the blasting plan, that's what the plan was. So if this doesn't work, Maine Drilling and Blasting will no longer be able to blast on there. So we want this to work, what I'm telling you. Because tomorrow morning, I was going to go see Graham, the fire chief, we were going to call the state fire marshal's office, and they were going to not allow Maine Drilling and Blasting, I'm, I'm saying that they would have to look into it. But we were hoping they were not going to allow blasting until this issue get resolved, right? So now if you're not blasting the face wall, which is the problem, and not touching between the property lines, until this thing is resolved, then I think that's a temporary fix, right? So we don't have to stop Maine Drilling and Blasting.
Right? Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for watching.
Yeah. Somebody watches.
She is going in once in quite a while.
I just already sent a letter about-
She's here on four eight. Four eight is what she's here for.
All right. Expedited funds 2020 gopher first responder stipends.
All the unanticipated funds received in 2020.
So moved.
How much is that amount too?
I thought we did this last meeting.
I thought we did too.
They brought in that it was accepted, that the gopher at least, and then, um-
I thought we transferred the money last meeting too.
We did, we had two, we had two things in last month's, last meeting's agenda.
Yeah, yeah, but she said it wasn't officially accepted, and the stipends actually came in in June.
So tell me that again, I didn't hear you.
The, the first responder stipends came in in June, that's one thing.
That one we didn't vote on, but it was the 147,000 we voted on.
Yeah, I let you know that it came in, but we pretty much just acknowledged it. She wants something to say, it's a-
She being Cindy?
Yes. Accepted, and then also to say that she can transfer the library share to there.
Okay, so you want to motion, motion to accept the gopher funds, the 2020 gopher first responder stipend in the amount of whatever? When one was 147 and the other was something else?
53,407.
53,407. And that we authorize Cindy to disperse accordingly? How does that sound, gentlemen?
Because that's all reimbursement.
It's all reimbursement, correct.
Second. Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, I would just like to add, I, I am going to vote against it. I accept the money, but I think the money should go to the general fund based on, we still don't know what's going to happen from December or anything else. I know nothing against the library, but I think this money should stay in the general fund, and it should not be going to the library department.
And I disagree with you, because they, they, the library expended money, extra money for-
Expended money.
Yeah, but even all within their budget, this is, this money goes-
No, that was above and beyond their budget, this reimburses them for the other expenditures. And if, and if you look, now you're not, well, you didn't get your email, right?
No, I didn't get my email, which, I, I'm interested-
Before, we don't know that yet, but there was also from Cindy, a, a current expenditure budget. So you were not in the dollar strip. It's not so bad, so I disagree with you, but I, I understand what you're saying, but this is COVID monies that's been reimbursed to the town for expenditures that were, that detracted from other costs within the library. That's not the same, the library won't have money left over at the end of the year anyway.
So do we know all of those costs are from the library, do we know what those are?
Yeah, they were integrated on the gopher-
Yeah, it's all still down.
And it was a total of $30,000.
We can have money back if they didn't spend it, correct?
Right.
So that's reimbursement not only for, that's reimbursement for fire police and, and library.
In library, right.
They were things like digital books, which have gone up, they've almost doubled in usage. They were funds that we don't normally spend, we spent about $5,000 on digital books. We normally spend about 1,300, well, it's probably $1,400 a year. And also, we improved the wifi so people could use the wifi outside the building, which they're still doing, they couldn't do that previously. So those are extra expenditures that are, were not built into the budget. We specifically did those things to improve access to services when, while we were closed, and also because we knew the gopher funds were there specifically.
I even clearly remember though, the wifi was talked about, and I thought it was the, majority of the board said one slot, not the whole parking lot, because there was, there was some security.
Ultimately, it's not-
Okay, we're going off the path here.
Right. We got a motion in the floor in a second.
Vote your way if you want, is there any further discussion?
None, none other than my answer is, so if we don't accept this, there's going to be a deficit in their budget, because you, you've overspent your budget, based upon knowing these funds were available.
They have, they'll have money left over.
No, but I'm just saying, we don't, we didn't accept it, right?
Yeah.
She spent the money already, there's no question.
If you want me to comment further, I can say, we, we always give the money back at the end of the year. Whatever is not spent, that is the RSA, and that's what we do. We've done it the last three years that I've been here.
Right.
And that's the bottom line, is it will go back to the town.
Without being reimbursed for that, that's paying for something that's already wired.
Correct. Correct, that's correct.
And we have already taken the funds.
Yeah.
Okay, full call, please.
Alessio.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Who's?
Yes.
St. James?
No.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, public writeaway ordinance.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Have a good night, thank you. Um, I did not get a chance to read this, I'm sorry.
I did not either.
Public writeaway ordinance, it's fairly, um-
Long.
Long, so, I didn't copy the whole thing for everybody, I sent it in an email, I can make copies if you want. That's the only one, I'm sorry.
Don't we read, this is old, you know, they offered us if we wanted to partner, and we said we would, and this is for the good of the town.
Yeah, so this is what they drafted, but we haven't accepted any of it, so.
Except it, so you should read it all, but there's only a couple of places that might change.
Pass them on to the next meeting.
I was going to say, if we can table this till next meeting, unless there's any objection.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I didn't realize it was as long as it was.
Actually, I'd be concerned, is this something we want our council to look at?
Probably.
They are lawyers that-
No, I get-
They are?
I read, I read it through-
Ah, since talk of letters, not the-
Yeah, since, it's nothing-
Yeah, but Donahue still did.
Yeah, but if you read it, especially the cover letter, it explains what they've done and where your points might be that you might-
They, they are actually pretty, as a firm, in terms of land use, they're-
I, I don't disagree with that, I guess the point would be-
You want to have a pair of eyes?
Another pair of eyes that has a vested interest in Kingston.
Okay.
Resident, this was on the oil, like one they kind of made for multiple towns, so I think it would behoove us to have our council look at it, unless there's any objection.
No.
Send it to Senator.
Please.
And tell them not two weeks.
Uh-
Because we're going to be voting on it next Monday, I guess, until I said so.
So yeah, if everybody can take a look at that and go from there. Um, so we did receive an update from 35 Marshall Road, did you guys see that? Yeah, they're, um-
Just waiting to pay.
Yeah, they've got bumped because there was a discrepancy, and, and the chief did tell me that, that they, it was the right angle at the bottom and the top, but the middle wasn't, and they were just taking the aggregate, so we're good on that, unless there's any question here. We'll keep an eye on it. Um, new business.
Which ingredient took care of?
I have to say, I actually just wanted to read through this to, since I've never heard of the Center for Tech and Civic Life, and why they're giving out $5,000 to anybody who wants it with no strings attached, I find that hard to believe, there's no strings attached to it.
It's magic.
Uh, so I will sign that before the evening is over.
If we send them five, they'll send us ten.
Yeah. That's another.
All right, um, committee liaison reports. Uh, so, obviously Rich was in here discussing that, the other, I'm just going to use that as a segue for me to go first, since I always go last.
That's your right as chairman. On model.
Uh, the A-frame by the VFW.
Across the street.
Um, apparently they have no building permit, I've witnessed that they've done quite a bit of work there, next to Shallow.
Which place?
They have an A-frame escape level service.
Oh, yeah.
Ready man, so whatever they got there?
He, he made place, and it's been about a minute.
He came in last week, he came in last week to pull a temporary, right?
Do you, I don't-
I think he asked, but he didn't pull one, so.
That was happened, right?
I mean, it was there, um, that wasn't a huge one. Did you hear from Cindy, anything on the ID cards?
Yes, you don't break, you're going to make it.
Okay.
Good for Dawn Briggs.
And then I, we had fielded a complaint regarding frontage road, front of the old fairgrounds. There's quite a bit going on there.
The same place that they made, including junk cars on.
It just seems like they're moving things around. Pile's getting bigger.
Okay.
Or it's getting more spread out, there's multiple piles now.
So they did cut a number of trees and then removed a lot of the junk cars and stuff in there.
I know, I know you were taking a ride down there, so I didn't know if it would be a fall on that one.
I was.
And the rest we disregard to the permits that I'm still working on. Every time I get close, there's always something new that needs to get added, so. Other committee liaison reports.
Um, yes, I met with both Chief Pellerin and with Rich St. Hilaire, reviewed the contracts. I said there were three, a couple of minor changes in all three, I sent them to the chairman. I'm not sure which attorney it goes to next for final review. I'll, I'll type, I'll retype Rich's, because it's a PDF file, which we cannot do anything with. So I'll, I'll take the next day or two to, to type that up and get it on a word document, so that way we can, we have a template and then we can use it as we need to. It's very similar to what, what Chief Pellerin's, maybe I'll use that, I'm not sure which I'll do first. But there were minor changes, and, um, we were able to resolve them as, pretty simply, and, um, if you give me the word, I'll go to the next level, so that we can get that, those contracts signed.
So where did you get them from?
Well, I asked Graham to send me his contract, and I asked Rich to do the same. One came to me as a word document, one is a PDF file.
And you blended them?
And I haven't done that yet, I know, I haven't, they're very- So I may take Graham's and then modify it to work in the items for Rich's. But I'd like to get that off my plate into a lawyer's hand, so that we can then meet with them and-
What do you want, want to review it first and then send it to lawyers, just so we have anything in it?
Okay, I can do that, I can, I can make it both way.
And then get it reviewed and give your report and send it to attorney.
And tell me where to sell, have Susan, direct Susan to send it to an attorney for finalization. Okay, we can do that, I'll have that for next Monday night then.
Perfect.
Okay.
Uh, you had a contact, someone who is a labor lawyer, or?
Uh, I thought it was with, um, yeah, that's, um, She and Finney and Bass, but, um, I don't know if you wanted to use them, or you want to go to someone, but-
No, I don't want, no, we need someone else that specializes in, in-
She and Finney Bass is Liz Bailey, she's, she's the one, Liz Bailey, She and Finney, I could get you a phone number.
Okay.
Okay.
Book report from a history book. Uh, thanks for pointing, the book is probably going to be in a neighborhood of 750 to 60 pages, which means it's gone up from 700, which means two things, the design price is going up and the printing price is going up. So, basically, we're looking at about $50 a book, which hasn't been officially determined yet. We're going to start a pre-sale campaign soon. I will probably be announcing that hopefully by next Monday.
I thought people already paid for the book.
No. The only thing that's been paid for so far is the donation list, which serves $10,000 or something in donations. Um, we've got some options on whether to buy 500 books or 750 for books. The more books we buy, obviously, the less it costs per book to print, the more your money's spread out, but at the same time, then you risk not selling them out. And I will have a worksheet for you next week to go over that, so we can make some final decisions on whether we go to 500 or 750 books, but our campaign is going to be limited. The number of books sold will be sold, and once they're sold out, they're probably done.
What's it, what's it costing, what do you think, roughly?
The 50,000.
I don't know how many we ordered.
It's like 100, what's it, what's it?
Well, $100, $500. If the, I, I should have brought that in.
If I remember correctly, Richard-
If 750 books are ordered and they sell out, it was like a $12,000 profit. So making money on book, which I'm not sure we want to do, because what do you do with that money other than, you know?
Well, you do the same thing Kingston days, as you roll it back into the next celebration.
But for what, for a 25-year future book?
No, no, no.
You know, so you don't want that money to sit there, you don't want one more of these little funds that sits there for 25 years or whatever.
What if nothing happens?
So the other thing is if you buy 750 and only sell 500, and you have 200 books left over, your profit drops to about, do you have that sheet? Oh, so you can read it.
Yeah, well, it's hard to figure out what you got on here, to be honest with you.
Well, bottom line is, we don't know the answers to that yet, and until we pre-sell looks to see about how many we're going to need, then we'll make a determination whether to buy 500 or 750.
I think that'll be a big seller.
Yeah, and they-
They put a lot of work in.
The one if-
No, you have no question about it.
Basically, Fremont and Brentwood sold 10% of the population. So Kingston's now at 8,000 people, so it'll be 800 books if you use that as a general rule. Um, so that's good news. Bad news on all this is that all the printers are so far behind from all the COVID, they're probably not going to get a book until March if we meet all the deadlines on our end, which we may or may not do. So we're trying to come up with something to sell a gift card or something as a book to give out at Christmas, so people can give the book Christmas. But I hope that Wednesday night we solve most of this, and next week it can give you some definite answers. But just to let you know that it's well underway, and about eight of the chapters or nine have been approved for print out of the 14 or 15.
We're going to, you're going to need some money from us to pay for it upfront, is the other piece of-
Oh, that's, that I'll probably approach you next week, but my plan is to approach you with borrowing or rest money back from Kingston days and then paying them back with sales, because we've already, they've paid back all the money they got originally. Because we've already, they've paid back all the money they got originally with the donations.
Are they soliciting businesses or anything?
They're what?
Are they soliciting businesses for donations?
They're trying, but you know, they got ten thousand right on the bat. There's not many more people coming forward. But we're all obviously looking for donations. Anybody wants to. It'd be an excellent book for real estate agents to buy to give away with purchases with a house or something.
That is a great idea, absolutely.
We've got several real estate people operating in the area. We've got conversations going with the library about involving them to sell books and take, accept a credit card or PayPal. Cindy's checking with Tammy and stuff to figure out the legitimacy of taking, using her credit card to purchase books. Because one thing the other towns have said is about fifty percent of the books get shipped. The people in Florida that have passed residence found them. You know, and we've, we've figured out all the costs on that and what they had to price the book. But that would be a credit card purchase because obviously, or you wait till they mail you a check and things like that. Hopefully by next week, we've got more detail. We're going to try a major campaign at the election. We're not going to put anybody inside. We're going to put a poster in that says the book is going to be X number of pages at such a cost, pre-buy at this number.
Order it online.
Or online.
Excellent.
I am proud to report that I did receive a text message from our fire chief, Graham Pellerin. He has completed everything he said he would. He passed his fire officer two class, which gives him the highest certification he can have as an officer. And he met all the obligations. I still won't be going for a little breakfast with them because I voted against them, but that's okay.
Why does that surprise you?
But no, I am proud that he did do that. And no, we had a conversation. I, you know, when the deadline is set, a deadline is set.
And even with everything that happened, he was able to.
Yep.
Do it somewhat in the time we wanted it done.
Yeah.
Not off the, by very much.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up, remind the board, we talked about this last year. I, and the season's upon us now that boating season is finished. And I last year had a hard time seeing boats parked on town property over at Sands Lane. And, you know, I would like to see us, you know, the town go up there and set up some sort of like, you know, at least a couple of metal lockers for wherever our property is and maybe throw a cord through it so that boats aren't parked on our property like they were last year or they have.
Sands?
But I want to bring that to the board's attention. I'm only one, but like, I know we talked about this.
I think that was decided that we were going to give them the sign that we get out of there, but we're going to have a.
Does somebody have a survey plan of that? So I'm sure we'll be on that.
I believe we do. Rich is well aware of it. I don't know if Elliot is.
All I know is that they don't think they have to obey any rules down there.
Say that again?
I didn't think the Sands Lane people like to obey rules.
They didn't like.
They don't like to obey rules.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but I think if you want to, look, I don't know how the board feels, but I thought we did decide that. But just want to bring it up again, that maybe we need Rich pick survey, find a survey and then go up there, mock the town property. It could be as simple as a couple of metal stakes and put some cord through it.
Do we want to do it that way or remind who, who approached the board last year? Maybe a letter to them saying that, just a reminder, friendly reminder that you cannot park your boats on town property.
But I think we need to actually physically mock the property would be the best because they're going to do it against it.
I think, I think we need to make.
There's even rumor last week, last year LA, that somebody down there was charging people rent to put their boats and trailers on the property.
I rest my case.
So if you want to instruct Rich just to pull out this survey piece.
Survey?
Survey map and wherever the town property is, mock it out.
Obviously we need help. Dennis, I should seek it.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Did you all get this Department of Transportation?
No, just you, Elliot.
I have, I have four.
I would vote no against it anyways.
All right, we got our next, or I'm sorry, we have board business, review expense report and the 2021 budget. All right, if you look in your folders on the, so there's a budget in there and then there is a schedule of the budget committee. That just came out. So we have till the fourth of November. To weigh in on this, Mr. St. James as our representative there, right?
There's a question today whether it's okay for Cindy to share this partial, it's not completed yet. Whether she can share it with the budget committee. I'm not sure how that all.
On the selectives budget? Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. We've just got to figure out the highlighting what we're going to do, but yeah.
There's a few things there.
Yeah, keep, I'll see any reason not to. On the revenue, well, I'll talk to Cindy, it's all right. We don't put the taxes that we receive with revenue here, right? It's everything else but. See, there's an income statement, but that doesn't have it. She must pull it out, so.
Yeah, I haven't really looked at this one. I think that would just be it.
Yeah, the first, the first page, Susan, is the, is the revenue, the income.
Yeah, we get a big number.
Right, because it goes to the school. You almost need to have it in and out.
We got to review it.
All right, I'll, I'll.
Thing that needs to change.
This is great stuff, so.
Yeah. Are there any questions on that? Because I think that's probably what we need to do is just look this over. Next week.
The budget itself, we. We just want to start thinking about these few highlighted places, what you want to do with it.
Yep.
Yeah, the one is, one of them is the mosquito, the mosquito thing is in there. We don't really know unless you want to.
That are a few that went out, correct?
Yeah, but it's not due back until the beginning of December.
That's all right. We have to take a estimate on that anyway, so.
I mean, it's been the same for years, so it depends on what kind of bids you get in. But dragon mosquito has been the same for quite a while, so.
But from now, we know that's what it was this past year, current year?
Yep.
As long as we get the current year, then we still have time in December to adjust accordingly, right? So you got to, you know, don't.
Yeah, it's not ideal, but I think we did the permitting thing with that. Kind of screwed everything up on that, so. All right. Public comment number two. Anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
All right, the LED street lighting, for those who don't know, that will be going to the warrant. It got so convoluted by the end, it's just got to go to the warrant. And Cindy will be drafting that, so. I was in favor of that in my book just because it's gotten to the point where it doesn't look like the original concept that we all agreed on. And it's just, it's better that the people decide.
The work that we're on is still at a point where, once we do sign the contract with Affinity, they're going to go and change the lights. It'll be done in like two months. It's the, what I was reading, some of this piece was the pain of how Unithill gives us the money back.
It's just over in one year. It's, you're spending money over five years or whatever. And that's the part that needs to go to the warrant.
Yeah, but that's basically the rebate pot from Unithill is what it comes down to.
I think we just need to make sure when we draft, when she drafts that, we're showing the savings that this is going to offer the town in the long run.
Correct.
That just needs to be cut and dried.
Correct.
I mean, I don't see a problem with it, but has anyone called Steve Lieberman from Affinity? So he's aware it's going to go to.
Yeah, Affinity and Unithill have both been contacted. They're fine. They understand.
All right, we've got a intent to cut.
All right, I'm going to ask, where's Willie Fox Road?
Yeah, I didn't.
It's way over near Newton. And I think there's a guy right on the corner there that I'd get garbage.
So is Warren Woodcomb's home? You know where Warren Woodcomb used to live?
No, but you, so was it like Cantonian type?
No, it's on the. You're going to go from Newton to get there unless you go down beside Rich's house.
If you went down my road where it continues over railroad tracks when it comes into the.
The Grove.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you go to the Grove, you take a shaft right in this Country Pond Road. If you take Country Pond Road from where Rich lives, go to Country Pond Road. It ends up in the Newton side. It's this side of it, but you can't get near it. Let's wallow away.
I think we need to do something on our intent to cuts because we seem to keep getting in trouble with.
I was just about to ask you, you're right down there. Is this okay to sign Rich?
I'm not familiar with property, but I think people need to have their property properly marked. You know, we need to know any wetlands on the property and know they're not affecting any of that. I mean, there's a lot of things we're running into trouble with on these simple intent cuts.
So maybe we have the tree warden check them before.
Yeah.
Well, I think probably what we need to do is amend this where he has a sign off block on this, so that, I mean.
So we know that he's.
No different than the assessor doing his review or anything like that. You can't all just drive out there and go walk through the woods.
Let's, let's have him.
I don't mind going down there to property meeting with homeowners and seeing what they're doing if there's nothing close to property. I think his intent to cut may be something to size these desks, put a house in or something. Or it may be five acres.
But then after somebody boards feet, he has to claim it and so on and so.
Yeah, there ain't much here.
It's not a very big area though. But still, I think there needs to be a better process.
I think that might be the way is a process because you're right. I mean, I look back at eight one, you know, that was an issue. It seems every, and that was a couple of years ago. But I think we've got to notify people that, you know, an intent to cut is a process. It's not like they drop off the paperwork and two days they get it signed and they can do it.
It's not like a building permit is destined to do what you want.
We didn't ask for it, we didn't ask. I'll, I'll drive down there tomorrow and see what it is, but I think we ought to change the process.
Yeah, I, this one, the highest amount of board foot is eight hundred and fifty. Oh, actually.
That's a state form.
Yeah, he's.
So say how big his lot is.
We need a new form.
Is that Billman? Is that Billman?
Yes. How big is the law?
State made use of old piece. He's got, there's a tree farm in there.
What's it, what's the exact, is there anything other Willie, Willie Fox?
I can, I can show you how to get that.
Seven Webster Road is the, in Newton.
That's the building address.
I can show you.
One Wiley Fox Road is.
One, okay.
So you get onto the Grove, come out.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Take a right. Billman's house is here. Warren Woodcomb's house is down further. Those are the two homes in Kingston then.
You know your county where you can name the people's property.
Not just that, people from forty years ago. Speaking of trees. Two sixty-six Route one twenty-five LOC in a butter there has had a number, they have destroyed a number of trees and dug a test pit on this person's property.
I will bring it up tomorrow night, but typically that's a civil issue between landowners and not.
It is.
Does not involve the town. When it's a dispute over a property line or.
That's a civil issue between.
I don't think this group would have purposely cut on somebody else's property. They're too professional.
It gets so many things right that when they screw up with something like this, that doesn't make any sense.
That would be a civil issue between.
Right, but I will bring it up tomorrow night, let them respond to it.
Yeah, I mean.
I wouldn't go down.
Or take the one owners.
Did they cut, did they cut trees too?
I don't know what the, I think it said they dug test pits.
He said they have destroyed a number of our trees and have dug a test pit. That's.
Well, I'm going to put this out there. Susan, could you contact them and let them know that this is coming before the planning board tomorrow night? And it would probably be a good time for them to address it in the planning board as our.
I'm sure they'll be there anyways, yeah.
Well.
They're one of the few people opposed to the, this project.
Which property is it about one twenty-five or?
They're one of seven.
They're one of seven, yeah. I shall rule. All right. So we're going to hold off and then intent to cut till Rich goes down there and looks and then we'll establish that.
Actually, if you want to wait till, if Rich finds it okay, can he approve it or let Cindy, I mean, not let Susan notify him? But do we want to wait till next week's meeting?
Well, I'll try to talk to him tomorrow and then we ought to let Rich get involved. Make it a regular thing that it goes to him first.
The other thing we have is an application for facility use for the town beach at the rec center. They're having a memorial service. Four to eight PM on the thirtieth and.
You kidding?
We don't have an estimate of the number of people.
I asked her today. She said she couldn't tell, she couldn't say how many people will show up. It could be five, it could be fifty. And I said, well, they, they may want to know about that.
She had a, so what, what happened was a young lady lived in Kingston above Exeter Road. They moved a few years ago to Florida.
Yeah.
And she had a tragic accident, we believe, that police were looking for her for a period of time, her and the vehicle, no after. They found her vehicle in the pond with her in it a few days later. So the neighbors that were her neighbors up here, up on Presidential, wanted to have an event. When they first spoke about maybe having planes or, so they wanted some place where they could go and just have a memorial service.
But you can't have it open to any unnumbered, undesigned, some people.
Well, I think, I think she'll certainly have less than a hundred people.
It's, it's an open area. It's outside. They're not using.
On top of the beach. So I think.
You can't socially distance with a hundred people over there.
She said five to fifty.
Yeah, she won't have, she'll have, yeah, she won't have even a hundred, I think.
I don't have a problem with it.
I think if it's outside, I don't.
Okay.
Do we want to just run this by the health inspector to make sure that we?
I think it follows the state rules. I already talked to Peter about it.
Okay.
Paul Butler's mine.
Paul Butler's mine.
I still would prefer that whoever's organizing this event talks to the health inspector and is at least briefed on the town of Kingston guidelines for COVID and state guidelines and they're hearing to that.
Did a caller give her Peter's number?
Yes.
When is it? Four?
Thursday, or thirtieth.
Friday. Friday?
I have a couple of non-public items.
Let's do what I.
Did you guys talk about the Route one twenty-five crosswalk?
No, we did not. I know I was forgetting something.
Did you say?
The crosswalk.
One twenty-five.
Who asked for that? I thought.
I, I didn't.
That came to us before.
It did.
And the issue was if they put it in, we have to maintain the shuttling of the sidewalks, basically.
Clearing, clearing everything.
Clear that go, so not just the plow coming through, someone had to clean off the corners.
So what, what's some of the issues that came up originally when I brought it to the board? Was that some people like to ride the bike, do Jackson Road, Hudson Road, and they didn't have a safe way to cross there?
Get a stoplight.
The electric's green to go.
And we set a crosswalk that we have to maintain. If we don't maintain it, we're setting up liability.
Yeah. I'd say, I thought we already ruled on this that we didn't, weren't going to do it.
I think we ruled to do it.
I, I think the intent was if they didn't do it now, because they'd have to run the future wiring or whatever. But I didn't think they were actually going to put them in until a later date.
I think that's right. I think they did set something up that we put in, in wire kind of for future.
Can we check with Rich and just see if he has the availability to maintain something? I mean, is there any cost to us or is it just we have to maintain?
Yeah, we had to maintain it. I think we did talk to Rich, but I don't know what was his response. It was, it was up here. I'm sure he wanted to do it.
Maybe we should put your trash cans on the corner too.
No part of the sidewalks anywhere.
I think it's stupid, but because we don't have crosswalks anywhere else in town.
Well, the only reason why we looked at it is the state was going to redo the highway there up to New Junction Road. At that time, they would put it in for us for free.
And that's still going to happen?
Yeah.
If we maintain it.
So we, we got to shovel? That's what we got to do?
And they put in, after that, anything breaks on it, we're responsible for it.
So they, they're going to do the portion of highway from Placid Line to Hunt Road, New Junction.
So that ought to be a disaster for a while.
We're going to widen the center train. Well, it's a board's pleasure.
I'll check with Rich. How's that sound?
Okay.
That's good.
Motion to approve the minutes, both public and non-public, of October 5th.
Uh, the only thing I had is I was contacted by a member of the public and I'm not seeing it in there, but he said it was referred to as the Vets Club when we were talking about the BFW regarding the food truck. So did you have any luck on Farm Road?
Uh, yep, yep. Got them to turn around and Susan sent out the.
Stay in line.
Sent the agreement out.
What now?
Turn around in the area.
Well, I sent the, yes, I got the waiver from Waste Management. They sent me the letter to them.
So the house across the street where they were turning around, a building in the driveway, know the neighbors here, hey, you know, the trash truck, turn around, my, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other changes to the minutes? Those in favor?
I.
Post. Men's care. All right, that will conclude this evening's public portion. We have some legal issues to discuss, uh, non-public. Thank you for joining us.